Yes, all right, I need a motion to adjourn exec and re-enter our public session. Can I get a motion? Michelle and a second from Bill, all in favor? All right. Good evening, everybody.
We make a policy that everyone should be like, still here.
I had actually joked that I was going to go around and personally welcome each and every one of you. It was Bill and then Michelle?
Michelle, Bill.
Michelle and then Bill? And we all voted in favor. Except Tom. Except Tom Tchakma, who won't be able to be here to join us tonight.
And Xavier.
Oh, and Xavier, why?
He'll be right here.
Well, that wasn't very nice to me, really. I'm sorry. I'm just going to give Xavier a minute to come back. Happy New Year, everyone.
That's what everyone says about you, Jen, you're just not nice.
I know, that is, I know. It's my leading quality, nasty. It was Michelle and Bill.
There he is.
And now Xavier's going to vote. Xavier, no, sorry. Sit on deck here. Raise your hand. There you go. Thank you. Now it was all of us. All right, actually, you can stay where you are. Everyone, please join us in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Hi, everyone. So, Happy New Year to everybody. Thank you for joining us tonight. Just a few reminders that if there's an emergency, we have exits to the back and the side, and just make your way out. Also, this is a smoke-free building, just like all of our buildings. Okay. So, that brings us to the Board of Education meeting minutes of December 9th, 2019. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education approved minutes from the meeting of the Huntington UFSD Board of Ed dated December 3rd, 2019. Can I get a motion?
December 9th.
Ah, December 9th, how did I manage that? Sorry, 2000, thank you. Xavier, second. Bill, all in favor? Thank you. Thanks, Joanne. All right. Trying not to wear my reading glasses, it's really working out great. Okay, so, there's an FYI for budget appropriation reports for general school lunch and special aid funds as of 12/31/2019. There's also an FYI of budget transfers, and FYI of the revenue status reports as of 12/31/2019, and to the Treasurer's Report. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education approved the November 2019 Treasurer's Report. Can I get a motion? That is Linda, and a second from Michelle. All in favor? And finally, the warrants. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education approved the attached warrants which were certified for payment on December 18, 2019. Okay. Just making sure it's not my blurry eyes. Motion? Bill, and a second. Christine, all in favor? All right. That brings us to the Board Member Communication and Announcements. Does anybody have anything they want to talk about?
Of course I do. Good, that's good, because that's what we're here for.
Okay. Well, I'm going to leave all the concerts and all that to Jim, because I'm sure he has a list of them. But I just wanted to give a special acknowledgement to our community restaurants who donated to the Huntington Chorus fundraiser, Cabaret fundraiser, and to the kids who volunteered their significant talents to it. It was a really great night, again, the second annual, and they raised a bunch of money for the Chorus program, and the kids got to sing with their friends in a really casual atmosphere in front of their friends and family. And I was especially gratified that there were, I felt like, a lot of students in the audience, so it was really a nice...
It was crowded.
It was crowded, it was. I think there were over 100 people there, not including the performers.
The cafe.
The whole, yeah, this year, last year, we served the food in the cafeteria, and so there wasn't enough room for the tables. This year, we set up more tables, and they were all full. So, it was great.
Awesome. Anybody else? Well, I have a couple of things, because I attended the robotics, it's the kickoff, but where they gather together and they get to see the challenge of the year that First Robotics has put out for them, and it was really interesting this year. It has a Star Wars tie-in, which is kind of cool and obviously timely, and I know that the robotics team is off and running already, so I wish them the best of luck. I hope they have a great season. Also, and I know Jim is going to speak about this more, but I'll just give a shout-out to our superintendent, because a few of us attended this Legislative Conference over the weekend. It was put on by Suffolk County's Superintendents Association. They had speakers, and Jim was one of them, and basically, the gist of it, and he's going to do a lot better job at this than I am, but just the gist of it was to try and illustrate for everybody that although Albany and other parts of the state would like to paint Long Island school districts as all being affluent and having enough money to do everything they need and all homogenous, in other words, that we all look the same, our student bodies look the same, our challenges look the same, you know, Jim and his two other superintendents that he spoke with did a great job of illustrating how three districts on Long Island look completely different, with completely different challenges, with the one common factor being that we're underfunded and need more financial support for our students so that we can get them what they need. And he did an exceptional job, so shout-out to you.
Thank you.
And that's all I have.
Well, I might as well start with that. So, the three districts were selected. The title of the program was "The Data Behind the Stories," so three districts presented their stories. One is one experiencing decreasing enrollment, one stable enrollment, and one increasing enrollment. They tapped me to present the stable enrollment, and if you look at our actual total enrollment in district for the past five, six years, the number is almost identical. What I did point out is the changing needs and the drastic difference between districts. Let's put it this way, we have combined wealth ratio kicked in here. We are looked at as a mid-to-high wealth district that has a student population, not that has, but we are looked at as that, and we have 60% of our kids that are considered economically disadvantaged. We have a combined wealth ratio of 1.552. One is average, so we are well above average. Right before me was a district who is experiencing declining enrollment, Shoreham-Wading River. They have a combined wealth ratio of 1.16, very close to the average, with 4% of their students on free and reduced-price lunch platforms. It doesn't make sense. It really doesn't. So, I spent some time showing the demographic shift that has taken place. I used the length of my tenure, the past decade, as a timeframe, demographic shift, the socioeconomic shift, and what that comes along with. We have constant needs, mandated costs that are going to be there no matter what we do, and other things that we now have to reprioritize and address, because we need to make sure that every one of our kids gets what they need, gets what they need to move on to whatever that next level is for them, whether it be from school to school, from school to college, from school to career, whatever the case may be, we've got to make sure that we are there for them. There were quite a few jaw-dropping-type sounds when data was shown, and rightly so. And I did choose to make the last, the second-to-last slide despite the challenges we face, and the other districts did somewhat similar things. Look at what we're doing, look at the accomplishments that are characterizing this district. Look at what our kids are graduating with, look at the types of things that our kids are accustomed to achieving because of the great things that are going on with our staff in Huntington. So, it was really an eye-opening experience for me, because typically, I look at things from year to year. I don't look at, oh, 2011 to 2020. So, my jaw dropped a couple of times as I was preparing this, but it also makes me very proud to be a part of some of the great things that have gone on here over the past nine, 10 years, so...
I ask a good question about that.
Sure.
You give us the numbers, you know, where we see the enrollment every month or whenever you give it to us. I was wondering if you think it's significant or if it's ever been looked at, the number of students that come and go? Like, even if the number stays the same, you can see that, like, they left the school, they end...
And we have...
Is that a significant for us, and do you think it's...
It's more significant for us than for others, and less significant for us than for others. So, it depends on who you're comparing us to.
And that has its own costs, because new students have different...
Absolutely. There is a transient population. There are kids that are with us for a short time, mostly at the secondary level, but it could be at any level, so...
Because taking on board a new student requires a certain amount of resources.
And Mr. Henry will tell you that when I see a number from week to week that is above my own mental threshold, which is typically two or three, I call him and say, "Who are these kids?" And then, "Where did they go?" And he's always got that data readily available for me to look at or hear from him. But yes, a zero doesn't mean zero. It's a net.
Right.
So, it could be lost five, gained five. Typically, from week to week, if there's a jump that you can't see, because you're just looking at numbers, I'm going to point it out to you, so...
Sometimes we can see it because it's at different schools, so we can see a decrease here and an increase there, and then it works out to a zero.
But yeah, there is, it's not just because a zero is on paper, doesn't mean it's the same exact group of kids. But there is a degree of stability here that maybe other districts don't have, and obviously, there are homogeneous districts out there that are much more stable in terms of lack of transancy than we are.
Okay. I mean, she spoke that day, and she was talking right about something.
Jen, out the game, okay.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, no, one of the superintendents that spoke that day definitely was addressing that as being, I think, a bigger issue for them even than for us.
That was the district with increasing enrollment.
Yes, exactly. And she said, and they weren't landing, like, it's not like, you know, you lose 45 students and gain 55, and luckily, 45 of them fit in the spots that 45 of them left. It's...
She actually made a comment that the group of students sitting in front of a teacher in a high school classroom in September is a completely different group of students that is sitting in front of her teachers in June.
She was excellent, too. You guys did a great job.
Thank you. So, that said, I have a group of things here. We're right now on the cusp of beginning the budget development process. We have been meeting with our various administrators, budget managers, to look at what their requests look like, and our process is fairly straightforward at this point in terms of collecting information from them in the context of what the budget year looks like. As mentioned a couple of minutes ago to the Board, we're looking at a potential for about a 1.77 or so percent tax levy limit, so it looks like it's going to be below 2 for 2021. State aid is a question. One of the things that was very interesting is the two districts, actually, the three districts, show the percent of their revenues that are coming from state aid. So, with 60% free and reduced-price lunch students in the district, we'd expect to be receiving a good chunk of our revenue from the state. That is not the case. It's about 13%.
That's what got the gasp from the...
That is.
It actually did. It got an audible gasp when that statistic came up, because people couldn't believe that and the fact that somehow we're grouped into a high-wealth district.
Mid to high-wealth, for sure.
High-wealth district, right.
Where does the other 87% come from? It comes from our taxpayers. So, any shift in our tax levy is going to much more directly and significantly impact a taxpayer in Huntington than it will in Copeg or in either one of those two districts, Shoreham-Wading River, because their combined wealth ratios are much lower. So, we do rely heavily on our taxpayers, but that 13% state aid is also important to us. It's $133 million budget that we're working with here. So, state aid is a question mark, because the governor continued in his State of the State address last week, he alluded to the budget deficit, 6.1 billion, and some of the can being kicked down the road, didn't really talk much about state aid. He has got until next Tuesday to release his budget, and with that will come the state aid runs that alert us to his belief regarding what we should or should not receive in state aid. He has stated that he is intent on redistributing the monies to districts that need it more, allocating more equitably. That concerns me, because on paper, we don't look like we need what I know we need, what we know we need. So, there are a lot of thoughts in my head that are concerning based on what can't be seen on paper, and that was really the purpose of this workshop this weekend. So, my hope is that, listen, the advocacy knows no boundaries, so whether it be parents, teachers, staff members, administrators, students, we need to argue what we need for our kids in Huntington, and that can't ever stop, but understand that we have a couple of things working against us on paper, and that's a problem. Some benefits, I mentioned, health insurance costs have gone down for 2020, works by calendar year. We are looking at, again, a lot of people are watching how the state is dealing with taxes and tax rebates. They did make some changes to both the property tax, the property tax rebate for a district maintaining at or below tax levy thresholds, that may disappear come 2021, because the state is in deficit, so he has threatened that as a potential disposable. The STAR rebate has changed structure, so there's an assault deduction, the state and local tax deduction. It's still under a great deal of debate. That's a federal program. There are so many what-ifs out there. On a positive note, at the town inauguration on Monday night, I did run into Assemblyman Stern, who, we were talking about a couple of different things, and end result, without getting into the in-betweens, he offered us $125,000, no strings attached, so I took it.
Yes.
So, that's a positive.
Kind of crazy mouth, too.
Yes. So, we're working on a plan there. Jen, you already mentioned what we spoke about this weekend. This morning was the first day of the January Regents' Meetings. I would like to point out that I attended another meeting last week on the first item they discussed today, and that's the new New York State graduation requirements that are under discussion, that will probably be in discussion until at least the end of next year. But I am participating among a group of superintendents that are in four different areas, Nassau, Suffolk, Westchester, Lower Hudson, and just interesting to learn about their perspectives. And everybody's got a different look at things, depending on what kind of population they serve. So, Jen mentioned this one island, one voice concept that we've been kind of harping on for the past couple of years. While we work together, district by district, we don't all look the same, and our beliefs about what kids should need when they leave our high school, we may believe something differently than another district that has a completely different type of demographic situation. So, these are conversations that are going to take place over the next couple of months. There are going to be regional meetings. This is actually in this week's update for the Board to get a little bit more insight there, based on the Regents' Discussion this morning. But the conversations that I am having with this group, supposedly, we are going to have some FaceTime with the Regents in our area, so it's important that we band together and look at the things that are important to us. Other things the Regents spoke about this morning, they have conditionally adopted a first set of computer science and digital literacy standards for New York State. They have not done that before. They talked about amendments to the ESA fiscal transparency process. They are looking at a civic readiness initiative based on recommendations from a task force, so there are a couple of things attached to that. What does the state look at as a definition of civic readiness? They're looking at a capstone project, and they are looking at, they're looking at a couple of other things in terms of what we do on a curricular basis, so that's upcoming. And they also talked about certification requirements. One of the things that we are looking at in human resources is how to address the special education content areas in a manner that makes sense, and the state has put something together that allows us to address our needs in that regard. I have equity walks on my list, but Beth's going to speak to that very specifically shortly. Jen mentioned the upcoming things. First kickoff was terrific. We are hosting for the second consecutive year on January 25th and 26th, a huge First LEGO League tournament. This will involve middle schools, 120 teams over a two-day period at Huntington High School. We did, it was terrific last year, and we learned from some of the things that we experienced last year, it's going to be even better this year. So, if you have nothing to do on either one of those dates, particularly on Saturday, First LEGO League has our First LEGO teams in six, seven, eight, participating in programmable robotic, LEGO robotic competition on one side and a research project on the other, and both are adjudicated, and the kids really get into it. Let's see, all right, Math Honor Society, 44 new inductees last week, very proud of them. Triumph Music Honor Society induction this week. A lot of people had asked about the Grade Four music ensembles. We are doing, I spoke to Mr. Reynolds about this, we are calling them informances instead of performances, because part of the program for parents is going to be showing them how we teach kids how to learn an instrument, not just playing a song, but you'll see it all on that day if you can make it down Grade Fours. On January 17th, the Woodhull kids are playing in the morning, 9:45, and the Jack Abrams kids are in the afternoon at 1:30. We are starting very shortly that STEAM enrichment program for our K through 5 students. We are very excited about that, and I think that's about it.
Talk about the Jack Abrams.
Well, I'll let you speak to that. We had a bunch of Long Island String Festival Association and Scamia selectees. In our summer music program, Christine had asked me about this earlier, we are going to need to do it at Jefferson this summer, because the high school roof is being renovated. So, you want to speak to that show?
Oh, I just forgot to mention that I wanted to wish the like to the cast of Jack Abrams and Woodhull in their production of the, I think it's The Wizard of Oz.
I think it is The Wizard of Oz.
The Wizard of Oz.
Oh, my God, I don't know. I'm liking it.
And that is the weekend of the 31st, January 31st.
Should also throw out there, and I haven't mentioned on the second page here, that you've seen what our athletic teams are doing in the winter, very productive and enjoyable and successful for them. The track program, there is no better anywhere, for that matter. You're seeing on our website on a daily basis, some of the schools that our kids are excited to attend next fall, absolutely terrific. And I also do want to give up two staff shout-outs. Number one, Valerie Murray, Southdown teacher, who has been recognized with the Bright Lights Award by the Asset Group for her innovation and extraordinary contributions to technology integration, in her case, at the elementary level, so that's Valerie Murray at Southdown. And our own Cynthia Fletcher, school psychologist, was honored by the MLK Commission for her commitment to students' civil rights, and she was honored on Friday. And there'll be a piece on her very shortly on the website. And lastly, I'd like to give a shout-out to Ms. Cusack and Mrs. Rofel and Mary Di Benedetto and whomever's working with Brendan at the high school. We are looking into, and I think you may have seen this in last week's update, bringing in therapy dogs to as many of our buildings as possible through the Long Island Therapy Dog Association and doing it in the right way. Students' mental health is not something to be taken lightly, and that's just one thing we can do to assist.
That must be right up your alley.
Sure is.
I feel like the colleges that have been announced so far are exceptionally exceptional.
That's our kids.
I feel like this year just seems like up a notch a bit, to me.
A lot of them are getting into their first choices.
I think that's so exciting.
Yep.
That is exciting. All right, that brings us to public commentary, and given the veterans in the room, I'm not going to waste my time explaining what the rules are, so if anybody wants to come up, you have three minutes. Where are you?
Now I can see in the light, okay.
Good evening, respected Board of Trustees, Superintendent Polanski, Huntington Administrator at...
And Community.
Thank you, Bill.
Thanks. My name is Shannon Hustlebeck. My husband and I are proud to be raising four of our kids in this amazing district. As emphasized before and so many times, the diversity of our district is one of our biggest strengths. I am therefore asking you to consider and adopt the two high holy Muslim holidays of Eid al-Fitr and Eid al-Ara in the 2020-2021 district calendar. Our neighboring districts, our neighboring school districts have already set the precedent, and I'm asking our district to follow suit. I could go into the many reasons why this is important, but I'll just email them to you. Also, I'd be happy to send you any information you need in facilitating this decision. Thank you for your consideration on this, and thank you for your continued commitment to the Huntington School District. Thank you very much. That's a very timely comment. We have the calendar on the agenda tonight. Thanks. Anyone else? All right, then that is going to bring us to our first item for discussion in action, and it's cultural proficiency equity learning walks. We're going to have a presentation. Do we need to, I'm gonna probably go that way.
Just to, as Beth is transitioning over, just to lead into this, a short prologue, the Board is aware that one of our primary goals for the 1920 school year is to address and increase our attention and levels, attention to and levels of cultural proficiency. We had spoken about sort of a mid-year discussion about things we've done in terms of an action plan and achieving our goals. That may take a couple of meetings to touch upon everything that we'd like to share with the Board and the public, but this is just one of those things, after some of the events that took place, that have taken place over the past couple of weeks, who thought it was a good idea to really strike home some of the terrific efforts on the part of a lot of people in this district in terms of achieving one of our major goals. So, I'm going to leave it to Beth to talk about some of what we've done to address cultural proficiency. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to present some of the work that we've been doing in this area for the past two years and beyond. Prior to my arrival, some of this work had already begun. However, in the last three years, we began participating in a group, a consortium through the BOSIs called LICE, which stands for Long Island Consortium for Equity and Excellence. And we've sent a team each year where we really listen to high-quality professional development nationwide speakers and corporations that are really promoting this work across the nation, learning about best practices from districts that are local, in the state, and across the country. We've really had some amazing experiences there, and we've brought those professional development learnings back to our administrative staff, turnkeyed it to them, and then they've been sharing it with their staff at their faculty meetings. Being that cultural proficiency is a topic that is probably more difficult to talk about, discussing bias, privilege, and those types of things, we also wanted to provide support with bringing in some consultants that we found to be very profound over the last few years in our participation with LICE. So, I will start with a definition of what cultural proficiency is and then get further into the work. Cultural proficiency is defined as an ongoing process by which individuals and systems respond respectfully and effectively to people of all cultures, languages, classes, races, sexes, ethnic backgrounds, religions, sexual orientations, abilities, and other diversity factors in a manner that recognizes, affirms, and values the worth of individuals, families, and communities, and protects and preserves the dignity of each. So, this work is really, it's not something you can learn and just do. This is embedded in every decision that's made, in the conversations that we have, in the way we discuss students and their families, and in the way that we really do business. So, our goal is for everyone to be culturally proficient all the time. A goal for most is just to be proficient most of the time. It's a very difficult thing to accomplish, and even many of the speakers we've heard have said that they've had moments where they've realized that they kind of went in the wrong direction with regard to this. So, there is a continuum that just kind of gives you a little bit of perspective as to where, you know, some people may be and where we want to be. So, I'll put it kind of in teacher terms, because that's who we're working with, most teachers and administrators. So, we'll start at the end where we don't want to be, which would be cultural destructiveness. And this isn't where we even believe we are, but just to give you an idea of the continuum. This is where attitudes, policies, and practices seek to eliminate cultural differences. If we move on to cultural incapacity, that's where we acknowledge cultural difference but lack the capacity or desire to do anything to improve outcomes for minority students. Cultural blindness is where people operate with an underlying belief that all people are the same and culture and color make no difference. Cultural pre-competence is where we start to see the positives when we're aware of what we don't know about working in diverse settings and allowing for the possibility of moving in a positive, constructive direction. Cultural competence is when we accept and respect cultural differences, continue self-assessment of cultural awareness, and pay careful attention to the dynamics of cultural differences. And again, the end goal is to get to that cultural proficiency category, where we make the commitment to be increasingly effective in meeting the educational needs of culturally diverse students. So, some of the work that we've done was through a group called Generation Ready, and these are some of the offerings that they've had, and this is, there were other districts on the island that were utilizing them with very positive results. So, these were some of the opportunities that we looked to. An introductory workshop, providing foundation of what cultural proficiency is, what are the guiding principles, what are the tools, and what are some barriers. So, really, just a way to start the conversation, which, again, these are difficult conversations, because people really have to be very reflective, and some of this work is uncomfortable for Another opportunity that they offer is something called an Equity Learning Walk, where you actually walk the spaces of the buildings and classrooms to take a look at what the building looks like, what does the environment look like, what do those relationships look like, and are we even setting up a culturally responsive environment for our students? The next step after doing one of those types of walks would be to delve into the delivery of instruction, to make sure that it's rigorous, to make sure it's differentiated in appropriate ways. So, to review some of the work that we've done over the past few years, we did have some optional workshops provided last spring and summer. And again, this is in addition to all of the work that has been done and the work that the administrative teams have been sharing with staff for many years. On Superintendent's Conference Day, Mr. Polanski allowed for a wonderful keynote speaker in addition to his presentation to kick off the school year, which was very well-received, and it really gave us a great theme for the school year and a great boost. and it really gave us a great theme for the school year and a great boost on that opening day. We did have a consultant come back during, on Election Day, on November 5th, where all Finley teachers and Huntington High School teachers attended a three-hour presentation. So we went from the optional PD in the spring of last year, that was mandatory for our Finley and high school staff. And just most recently, last week, we actually had the National Director of Equity, who was the presenter, that we've, I've become accustomed to with some of the workshops that I know Mr. Polanski and I attend. He's the National Director of Equity for Generation Ready. He actually came to the district to do equity walks with us. He did two of them, and I'll review that shortly. And he also did a faculty presentation at the high school. So last week, we had the opportunity to walk through two buildings. Jefferson was one of them, and STEM was the other. STEM has really taken a lot of the work that we're doing and implemented it with staff. Last year, they came up with a committee on their own to kind of look aesthetically at what the building looked like and how could we make improvements. So Ms. Morrow was very eager to try this equity learning walk, and Ms. Capitulose said it was as well. So the equity team consisted of one teacher per grade level, the building principal, the assistant superintendent for curriculum instruction, and the generation-ready consultant. We use a data collection tool, which I'm happy to pass around, which I have right here. It was reviewed with the team prior to the equity walk. We also met with the consultant to discuss some of the things that we've been working on, some of the history of the buildings and things like that prior to the walk. And the focus of the walk was to really just walk through the building, looking at the environment in the hallways and the public spaces, as well as the classroom environments, and just noting relationships, just conversation, how are people being treated? Is it a friendly relationship? Is it warm? What's the tone? It was not instructional in nature, although that is part of what this protocol can do. We did not address it at this time. We were really just focusing on environment. The team was divided in half, as we didn't want to circulate the building with a group of seven or eight people. We split in two groups, and we just walked through the building for one hour. So the teachers were made aware that this was going to take place, and everybody seemed very receptive to having people just kind of walk through. There were no conversations. It was a walk-through and then a walk-out. And then afterwards, there was a session where glows and grows were discussed. So the glows were all the wonderful things that the team saw, and then the grows were the things that were the suggestions to improve on the protocol. And each team, after that conversation, presented the feedback to the faculty. So some of the feedback that we got, Dr. Witherspoon actually said at one point that he would love us to be a model district for other districts to come into because he saw such wonderful things here, and he's the kind of person that wouldn't say that if he didn't mean it. So I've heard him tell a lot of stories over the years. So the feedback was overwhelmingly positive from him, as well as from the equity teams. A lot of the teachers said, you know, "I was in that classroom this morning talking to the teacher about a lesson plan, and I saw everything totally differently. When I went in, I noticed things that I've never noticed before because there was intent, there was actual purposeful looking to see and get ideas from one another." There were some grows, and I will say some of the grows were in this building in that central hallway, and we're already making some adjustments to address those things. Yes, that's what I meant, the central office hallway. I'm sorry. So if you notice, there's already a sign that's up in English and Spanish that's a little bit more friendly than the stop sign that was there. You know, he laughed. He said, "There's a stop sign. How welcoming is that to families?" So, you know, he gave us honest feedback, and we took it and made some adjustments. But just looking at the building overall, there are wonderful, wonderful things already there, but some of the things that he suggested were increasing the number of multicultural pictures and posters in classrooms as well as in hallways, increasing the exposure of various printed languages in classrooms and in hallways, increasing student work displays just because that increases that student connectedness to school feeling in classrooms and in hallways, and ensuring that our entryways are warm and inviting to all visitors. And the nice thing about this feedback is it's really, it's easy to change in a very small, in a very short timeframe. So he said, "In three weeks, please send me some pictures of some of the changes you've made in the public spaces so that I can see what's been done as a direct result of these conversations." Here's a quote from Ms. Morrow. "The experience was very well received by the entire staff. At our faculty meeting yesterday, the team gave an overview of the debrief and how we can continue to move forward with this work. I have already seen teachers making an effort to hang more student work, both in class and in the hallways. Everyone at STEM seems truly energized by the experience." And this was from Ms. Capitulose said, "We found the equity walks to be a very positive and valuable experience. As a follow-up, the faculty and I conducted our own equity walks and efforts to share our own glows and grows. We are committed to this work, and we look forward to our continued learning and growing as a faculty." So it really was a feel-good experience, but also some areas where we can improve. As always, that's what we're looking to do. Some proposed next steps. We do have other buildings that we'd like to do this in, especially focusing on the same two things, where we're looking at public spaces and classroom spaces. There's also an option to work with them to create equity action plans where you take feedback from the equity learning walks and then establish a very concrete plan to move forward. There's also those other pieces that could be something we would want to consider in the future, where we're now looking more at the instruction, the rigor, and the differentiation, which is part of the protocol, which again, we did not look at this time. And continuously revise action plans to ensure further modifications are made because the goal of this work is really to make sure all kids feel connected to our school setting, and we want to make sure that we're constantly looking at things we can do to continue that work. And we want to maintain this as a priority, as an integral component of all that we do. So that's the end.
Thank you. Well done.
That was really well done, very interesting.
I have a question. Are we going to speak to some of the students about maybe getting some feedback from them?
Well, I have a meeting with the principals tomorrow, so the goal was to see if we could get some more feedback. I don't know how much the students, unless we did a before and after kind of thing, or, I mean, we can survey students. I know that a lot of the principals do that already with some Google forms and things to find out how they feel about school. Do they feel welcomed at school? And we're hoping that with each time we make these adjustments, that we're getting more of that on those types of surveys. I don't know how exactly it would compare, though, to something that we've done prior. But even just the lobby at STEM, there's a lot of wonderful vocabulary, academic language there, so we talked about adding those words translated for our students to see that their languages, and in multiple languages. Mr. Reynolds has agreed to work with his department, so we'll have some decorations in the central office hallways that will be there forever. I think a lot of the artwork that we've had in the past, the kids want back. And so I said to him, "Can you, whatever you make, can we keep it?" So photographs representing different cultures, different types of things like that.
We also talked about murals, which are definitely on the permanent level. Sometimes when you hang things up in the hallways, it starts to curl over time, and you've got to take it down. But we have some volunteers to potentially put something up that's a lot more permanent.
We should be able to tap some of our kids at the high school. We have such talented artists and so many kids who come from so many cultural backgrounds. I can't imagine that they wouldn't look at it as an opportunity to share a piece of themselves if that was a possibility.
We talked about his photography classes, that, you know, all from all different aspects.
No doubt.
The biggest piece is that they need to know in advance that we're not giving it back.
We'll just throw out there that this work is not easy. It requires some difficult conversations. It requires introspection that people aren't necessarily comfortable with, particularly at the beginning. I did not participate in the learning walks, but I had a chance to sit in the debriefing sessions. I didn't think it was a good idea for me to be present in those classrooms when we're talking about such intense and somewhat sensitive work, but to sit with, Carol was in the session at Jefferson, just to hear what they had to say about the experience. And honestly, for me to hear Dr. Witherspoon say that, you know, "I think you guys are on the path to become a model district in the state, and I want to speak to you further about you serving that capacity on a formal basis." And we know what we do internally. It's hard sometimes to think about what goes on elsewhere in comparison, but to hear that from somebody as experienced in this as he is, it was emotional. It was. I don't know if there's any other way to put it.
I just want to add one more thing, is that a lot of people will say, "Well, you know, what's next? What do we do next? And when do we get to the end?" There's no end to this work because there's always people that are new, that will need these experiences. There are people who might have gone through something that have changed their experiences that we need to continuously talk about this because it is ever-changing, it is dynamic, and it's the way we treat our kids. So it's really at the core of everything we do. So it really is something that we just need to continue the conversation with and continue it, you know, continue keeping it on the pulse.
And just reiterating back to the beginning where you were talking about the definition of culture and what we learned on that first day in the Superintendent's Conference Day, to make sure that we're looking at that definition in the widest, not just about what language people speak, what they eat at home, but what their family looks like, what their challenges are, what, you know, those sort of things, you know, to be represented in all of these things. I know you're doing that, I just wanted to reiterate it.
But I can tell you, there are, I'm sure that there are students and families that feel more comfortable integrating into our school district culture and some that are less. And the goal here, and we talk about, we're going to touch upon chronic absenteeism in one of our policies. You want kids to come to school and never want to be absent. Make them, well, they need to learn, obviously, from top to bottom, but make them feel like this is the best place they could be, no matter what the circumstances are on the outside of this district. And that really is what this is all about.
Right.
That's how important this work is.
So pivotal. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was great.
Thank you.
All right, so we are at the 2019-2020 Chemical Hygiene Plan. Do you want me to get a motion in a second and then you?
Sure.
Okay, so it is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education, adopt the attached chemical hygiene plan in accordance with OSHA 29 CFR 1910 dot 1450. Can I get a motion? Linda, and a second from Xavier. Do we have anything you want to tell us about?
This is just something that has, it needs to be done at least periodically, if not annually. Some credit goes here to George Austin and Jill Johansson, and Beth helped with this as well, but this is something that should be board adopted as often as it changes.
Okay. Did anybody have any questions or comments about this? All right, we have a motion in a second, all in favor. Thank you, that's everyone. Okay, and this comes back to Shannon because this is the 2020-21 district calendar. Should I do it same way? Motion in a second and then you tell? Okay, so can I get, it's upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education, adopt the attached calendar for 2020-21 school year. Let me get a motion and, Michelle, a motion and a second from Christine, and then we can open it up to discussion and questions.
Just a couple of idiosyncrasies with this calendar. Labor Day is late next year. First and foremost, Labor Day is on September 7th, so we are proposing Conference Day on September 3rd, which is the Thursday before Labor Day, and we would start with students on Tuesday after Labor Day. That's not something that happens annually, but in order to accommodate all the other things we like to do here, that's why that is in place as is.
The fourth being no school, no teachers.
With the fourth being nobody.
Nobody.
It's just, it gives people a Labor Day weekend to do what they do holiday-wise and return fresh on Tuesday. Kids as well.
Right.
I have a comment about it. I didn't even notice this before, and correct me if I'm wrong. Is this year a leap year?
This, 2020.
Oh, 2020, that's right. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, because I'm like looking for the 29th on here, but I get it.
You know, I would.
Thank you.
I would laugh at that a little bit, but full disclosure, we sat at the table and did the same thing last week.
Okay, thanks. I appreciate that, actually.
The only reason that we realized quickly before I had a panic attack is that leap years are always, then even years. February next year is 2021, so we're good. But thank you, and there is no laughing there.
I appreciate that.
Okay, the other, I mean, everything else is straightforward. There's not, there is some continuity in September. I prefer that personally, where you don't have September broken up into little pieces. A lot of the initial, early in the year Jewish holidays are on weekends, which does add to some complete weeks. The other change, I mean, the winter recess moves, and it looks like it starts in the middle of the week and will end at the end of the week next year. The other major change here is, as Mrs. Hustlebeck pointed out, May 13th is flagged as a holiday, and that is one of the Eid days. I have actually a list of the two Eid holidays going out to 2045, just to see how this would impact calendars moving forward. There are two of them, and there will be years periodically where both of the days have to be addressed. That is not the case in 2021. I think the next time it happens, I don't have it in front of me, it may be in 2028, 29. And obviously, the commitment here is not just to do it for 2021, but to do it moving forward. Not all districts are doing this. There are many that have done it, there are many that are doing it at the same time we are, and there are many that are not considering at this point. We do believe, as Mrs. Hustlebeck does, it's the right thing to do. It is listed along with one of the days in Memorial Day, and we actually had a conversation. I've tried to gather as much information on this as possible from local groups, and we've spoken to the town task force and just tried to get a sense of what would make sense here. That day and the 28th are listed as contingency days primarily because they are later in the year, would not be impacted by weather. So the first day that would be reclaimed, if there were a weather-related event, would be the 28th. The second day, or depending on how the board wants to do this, if there is a second day reclaimed, it would be the 13th, but it is listed as a holiday. Everything else is just shifting days based on where the standard holiday is.
And you're changing the way we colored the calendar so that it's clear.
I want, yeah, and we did that because we wanted to be clear that that is, that is a holy day for a number of our residents.
Did anybody have any further questions or comments about the calendar? We're all good with it? All right, we have a motion in a second, all in favor. Very good. Okay, that brings us to policy 5660. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education waive a second reading and adopt revised policy 5660, which is meal charging and prohibition against meal shaming. So can I get a motion from Christine and a second from Xavier? Do we have any discussion about this or any comments or questions before we vote on it? All in favor? Great.
Just to throw in, for those who are not familiar with this policy, the only change to it, it's complete in its current format. It did indicate that there would be a charge for reduced-price meals. That charge has been eradicated, that's the only change. It's now working, it's not a free meal, but it is a more state-subsidized meal. The state is paying us what a student on reduced-price lunch would have paid in the past, so it's just a change from a quarter to nothing.
Very good.
Okay.
Okay, that brings us to board policy 5672, information security breach and notification.
So this is, this is a, I don't want to call it a first read, this is a.
First we're seeing it, though.
Well, it is a first read with no action to be taken. This is a policy that doesn't exist, and it must exist, and obviously, with the attention that has been drawn to security breaches, data privacy breaches, ransomware attacks, et cetera, we feel it is time to make sure that we have an active information security breach and notification policy in place.
Okay, but no need for us to vote on that.
Well, I would like to give, the policy committee saw it before this, I'd like to give the entire board a chance to digest it, and we can adopt it.
There's very few optional elements to this, actually, though, right? It's all really codified, so it's.
Pretty much.
Yeah.
Okay. That brings us to board policy 6150. It is, and that's alcohol, tobacco, drugs, and other substances regarding the staff. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education, adopt revised policy 6150, alcohol, tobacco, drugs, and other substances staff. So I need a motion, and I've got Christine and a second from Linda. Do we have questions or comments about this for?
You've seen this.
This is, this is a second read, ready for adoption. The primary change here is based on law, education law, section 3038. As it states, we had to name a person, a resource, a human resource, that anyone in the community, students, staff, or otherwise, could approach with a request for information on substance abuse-related services, and that person is our Director of PPS, Pupil Personnel Services.
Anybody have any other questions or anything? Anybody have any other questions or anything? Okay, we have a motion in a second, all in favor? Yep, that's all hands. Okay, Administrative Regulation 6170R, Determination of Employment Status, Employee or Independent Contractor.
It's more of an FYI.
Yep.
Or any questions?
Want to say anything about it?
Regulations in general are not requiring of board approval, but anything that is changed, we do place on the board agenda for informational purposes, and in case the board has any questions or comments, or thoughts about it, this is basically designed to help the district formally distinguish between an employee and somebody whom we contract with. It's fairly straightforward, but this makes it that much more clear.
It seems based on the legal definition.
It is. Most of policy and regulation, well, not necessarily regulation, but a lot of it can be based on what law or commissioner regulation dictates.
Okay, so, if we don't have anything to that, we don't need to do anything with that?
No, and just so you know, a lot of, it's never been a problem here, because we are very careful with this, but I think other districts have gotten into trouble when they start listing certain people on their ERS or TRS pensionable salaries, that's, they have to be district employees, they can't be people you're contracted with, and this often falls into the category of either accountants, or auditors, or legal, et cetera. And all of those positions that we name, we contract with all of them, none of them are district employees, and that's the way it should be.
Excellent.
Okay.
Okay, so, we're at Board Policy 7110, Comprehensive Student Attendance.
All right, so, this is a first, if not first of many reads. This does need to be reviewed further, and we have talked about putting a committee together that would involve folks at, certainly at the high school and middle school, and staff as well. The change that's proposed here relates to a new definition based on ESSA requirements, or chronic absenteeism. So, the policy, in its essence, is very similar to what it has been for many years, and it does need to be reviewed further, but what was inserted here, for the time being, is a definition of chronic absenteeism. For state aid purposes, if a child is out sick, that would not be necessarily counted against the district. For the purpose of ESSA accountability and chronic absenteeism, which measures the number of students who have been absent over 10 days during a school year, doesn't matter whether the child has the flu, or the child is simply truant, that does factor into that accountability measure. So, the way the policy has been reframed, at least at this stage of the game, it addresses that piece of the ESSA requirement, and builds it into the attendance policy.
Even if you can prove that a child has been out with a medical concern, that absolutely makes it impossible for them to get to school, the school district still suffers for that absenteeism.
If the child is formally coded as on homebound instruction, I think that is treated differently. But if a child is out five days, let's say with the flu, obviously, it's an excused absence, those five days would be counted toward the threshold. So, it's, you'll notice also, in terms of the verbiage of this policy and what was changed, excused absences are inserted in certain places, because they, the ESSA accountability process does not distinguish between somebody who's out sick and somebody who's out elsewhere, and not excused.
That's crazy. Okay. All right, so, anybody have anything else to add to that conversation?
Yeah, I just think we should correct the spelling of attendance.
I don't know why you would think that.
In all of the headers, on all of the pages.
One T is not right.
Missing T.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, T is absent.
T is absent.
It's having chronic absenteeism problems. There you go.
Yes.
I know. We all get it.
Okay.
I've looked at this 250,000.
Yeah. As you didn't see it. Family was here, she would have loved to have popped you on that. Oh, poor Miss Emily. Okay, so, Board Policy 7220, Graduation Options, Early Graduation and Accelerated Programs. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education adopt updated Policy 7220 for graduation options, early graduation, and accelerated programs. Can I get a motion, Linda, and a second, Xavier, and do you want to say anything about this?
We reviewed it at the last meeting, and as it states here, it's really a combination of multiple policies into one, which makes it a little easier to find when you're looking for it.
Very good. Did anybody have any questions or concerns about this?
Nothing changed since our last review?
No.
Nothing. All in favor? Great. Okay, Board Policy 7223. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education adopt amended Policy 7223, Participating in Graduation Ceremonies and Activities. Okay, so, we need a motion for this one. Michelle, and a second from Christine. Anything you would like to...
Just the one change that's indicated there, in terms of related activities, as ceremony-related activities as a consequence of violating the district's code of conduct, and that's obviously not something to be taken lightly, but it's in there if needed.
Okay. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Board Policy 7320. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education adopt revised Policy 7320, Alcohol, Tobacco, Drugs, and Other Substances Regarding Students. Okay, so, let me get a motion. Anyone, motion? Bill, and a second from Michelle. Any questions or comments?
Same adjustment made here, as to the staff policy.
Right.
Director of PPS is the resource.
Very good. All right, all in favor? Board Policy 7435. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education waive a second reading and adopt new policy 7435, Student Voter Registration and Pre-Registration. So, we're going to go ahead and get a motion with this. Can I get a motion, Linda, and a second from Michelle?
Asked for the waiver here, primarily because we are required to do this effective now. I think I placed a letter in the board update a couple of weeks ago, from an organization who has offered to help with this. We have been focused on this for some time, but now this has got to carry down to pre-registration as well, and that starts when students turn 16.
Okay. Anybody have any questions or comments about this? All in favor? Great, almost there, my friends. And finally, we have, oh, figures, we have Administrative Regulation 751.1R, Immunization Guidelines. Okay.
The only change here was the words, student was struck in multiple locations, and child or children was inserted, and the definition of a child is ages two months to 18 years. Below two months, they are considered an infant, and 18 years and beyond, they are their own people, they are adults.
Okay, and we don't need to vote on it, because it's regulation.
Nope, it's just a small change.
Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Polansky about that? Okay, very good, thank you, everyone. All right, I think this brings us to Ms. McCoy in Curriculum and Instruction.
It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approve CSC, CPSC submissions as delineated.
Okay, we all got those. Can I get a motion? Bill, and a second from Xavier, all in favor? Thank you. Personnel, sorry, Mr. Polansky, we're right back to you.
Okay, I am asking the board for approval of personnel items on Schedules 4, 5, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 13, 16, 19, and 22.
Okay, very good. Can I get a motion? Linda, thank you, and a second from Michelle, all in favor? Great.
Two items of note here.
Thank you.
We do have a part-time teacher on this agenda, on Schedule 4, who will be the trailblazer in terms of our alternate education setting program, which is going to morph over time, so she is going to start with us and participate in the development of that program. And I'd also, I see him, I'd also like to congratulate an individual who has been granted tenure this evening. We will celebrate, obviously, at the next tenure ceremony, but Mr. Keith Miller, would you please stand up and wave?
Congratulations.
Keith started with us mid-year at Finley a few years back. Not easy to start mid-year. He teaches a range of courses over there, including our Regents' Level Earth Science course curriculum. He has been a breath of fresh air since he started, has been doing great things, not just in the classroom, but he is always there for the kids. He is omnipresent at events, he is, he's just a crowd favorite. I'd like to thank you for all that you have done, and will continue to do, Keith. We're happy to have you aboard.
Thank you so much, and congratulations. All right, Dr. Eckler, I think we're to you.
Okay, it is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approve items I through N on this evening's business agenda.
Okay, so, can I get a motion for the business items? Approval, oh, Christine, and then Linda. And does anybody have any questions or comments? All in favor? Very good. Okay, and Christine, I think we had one donation tonight.
Look at that, I was unprepared, sorry. We...
Our furniture.
These are more desks and chairs from the same...
Yes.
So, we'd like to thank Installment International for continuing to provide us with this awesome like-new furniture, valued at $37,000.
That's incredible, thank you to them.
And I'm sure George went and picked it up himself.
Keith's probably picked it up.
He did, he did.
So, is it here?
No, he's not here to see me.
Okay, that brings us to our second public commentary. Is there anybody that would like to come to the mic before we're done? All right, do we have any closing remarks by Board of Ed members? Then, what I need is a motion to adjourn. Christine, and a second. Xavier, all in favor? And we are adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone, get home safely.